Ask if.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, Jeff. They did raise it. It's been 300,000 for so long. Yes, they raised it up to a $500,000 maximum now.
I have a question, Jeff Paulson. The property that I got the map for is owned by somebody else. Why would the city be involved in it if you can't deal with the private owner?
Well, a lot of times in order to be eligible for an acquisition, you can't own the property and then write the grant. So a third party, you know, the municipality has to purchase it from somebody other than, you know, you can't own it yourself and then apply for an acquisition grant. So Six Rivers acts as that third party to step in, acquire the property and hold it until the time that you would get the grant and then you would pay us off and then it would become your property. And along with that process.
You would be responsible for it and we don't even, we haven't even talked to the owner of the property if he's going to sell.
No, well, it sounds like, it sounds like we have. Maybe Elaine, you could address that one.
I don't really have any particular information on that right now. We're still waiting on a number and feedback from the owner.
It sounds like they're willing to sell though. I mean, a willing seller is the key to the equation. So it sounds like they're willing and that is correct. There is not a number yet that's been set.
If I could interject, this is Mayor Verkaman. If I could interject, we had a meeting last week and all of the landowners along the Bell River on the west side were present at that meeting. And this particular landowner has said that he, he would be willing to sell us this property and alls we are waiting on right now is, is an appraisal. So that's what, that's why we wanted to have this, you know, meeting tonight to discuss this. And like I said, you know, we just want to say that we're interested and see where the cards fall.
Well, the owner of that property, I believe I know who you're talking about, went to the planning commission to get a certain thing done and along in that meeting and I was in that meeting that he said that he would go further if we gave him what he's got now. And he would go ahead with a marina down there on that property. So I, you don't have a price on it? What's he gonna ask? Because it's a city of a million dollars for the property? We don't have a price.
He's not, he wants to keep the building. So the property, the value of that property, I mean, like I said, I don't know what he's going to come back with. We don't know that. But he's not selling us the building. We're just buying some seawall property and some property to the north of that structure that he has, which is the mini storage.
Yeah, but that property description is the whole property that you, that I was sent, not just the little strip of grass area on the seawall.
Cheryl, if I could, what would ultimately happen? And the owner has expressed an interest. Currently at this time, you'll define some boundaries. The property split has not been completed. You're going to get a ballpark figure. You will submit to the trust fund. They will come back and give you a yay or nay, they're interested. They will require you then to get a full appraisal on it. We're going to be able to get pretty close. There again, a lot of this stuff's non-binding. That there's time to work on this. There's time to continue to negotiate with the property owner. There's time to do this stuff. A simple trust fund grant application, April 1, you won't even hear back until December, okay, on this, if they were even move forward. 18 months is warp speed on this. I've been through this probably seven times now. This is like a two-year deal. And at the end of it, you have to have a, an appraisal from a, somebody who the trust fund, I don't want to call them registered, but you know, I guess approved, yeah. So approved. So there is still time. If you don't get the application and you miss the April 1 deadline, like I said, then you gotta wait for another year on this thing. This is not, this is not going to be binding. So I think you have now, there's two different things. Now Brian's outfit could go in and they can buy, they can hold property. We've actually done that before. Right now, I think the owner's willing to go through, the owner of the property is willing to go through the process with you. So you wouldn't be required to have to cash him out or anything else. If you do sign an agreement with Six Rivers where you were to do an acquisition where you actually have them and buy. So for example, in Clay Township, we use Six Rivers to buy the property out. We were on the hook at the county, but we had a pretty high level of confidence that that was going to go through. And we did it because, be brutally honest, the owner was 83 years old and his health wasn't that good. So he wanted to expedite that. So we used that. So sometimes you can use Six Rivers in that capacity. But I think you have a situation where you have a owner of a property that would be willing to go through all the additional steps if you get, you know, if you get a price narrowed down to what it is. And there again, the trust fund's going to come up with a number. They're going to give you 75% of that. In the meantime, there's some other foundations and there's some other potential. I'm not going to say it's not going to cost the city some money, but I think there's opportunities that we can help bridge that gap. And these, these types of things, this, this to me is arguably a once in a lifetime acquisition. And then you can, you have, you have a lifetime to figure out what you're going to do with it. Like you said, the development grants, the monies can come in and you can build these things out over a period of time with not a tremendous amount of money out of pocket.
So if we actually see this thing by doing its approval and it goes through, then we're probably looking before we even see the docs or anything there, three years.
That's probably a pretty safe estimate. This stuff doesn't happen, this doesn't happen overnight. Brian, you can, you can explain that better than I can.
No, no, you're exactly right, Jeff. It doesn't happen overnight. And it is that time for you. You gotta be a little bit patient, but it's a great program and a lot of good can come of it. So if you have a little bit of patience, it can really work well for you.
And we have an out clause somewhere. Don't you know what we're doing?
Oh, yes. There's, there are several out clauses, even with the accepting, acceptance of the grant. You don't have to accept it if you get it. There, there are certain things. You have plenty of opportunities to, to get off if you want to. For example, this, you know, we could hear that the, the price tag could be something that's really crazy high and out of everyone's, you know, budget. And then we, then we would, you know, then we would, you know, think twice and maybe not move forward. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things that could happen to change things. But there's a, this like, like Jeff said, this is a way to get it started, get that ball rolling with, with some opportunities for some outs.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Bob Davis here. Can I just ask for one clarification?
Go ahead.
So the, the only thing that is before, it sounds like before the city commission this evening is the agreement, which is a $3,000 agreement. I think that's correct. With $1,500 due at the time the agreement is executed, is the other 1,500 due in December, regardless of whether or not we get the grant?
Yes, it is. December of '21, yes.
Yeah. So it's 1,500 now and 1,500 at the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Ross for a further clarification. Does the 1,500 plus 1,500, the 3,000 total also include the other infrastructure grants that you discussed for possible future improvements, dock building, et cetera? Or does that only include the acquisition?
That would be just for this particular acquisition grant application, yes.
Okay. Is it similar pricing to continue and do the further infrastructure grants that you discussed?
Well, we have other avenues for that too. I mean, what, you know, this is just, Six Rivers Land is just one, one piece of it. There's many other ways to, to get monies to further develop that property. Anyone else?
Development as opposed to acquisition.
Yes. Yes, I have some questions. Lisa Hendrick. All right. First off, it sounds like there's been a number of people involved in this for quite a long time. And yet this comes to us at the last minute. And, and, you know, I understand what everybody's trying to do here. But I really object to the fact that we get this last minute. We don't get a map to the property. I know the property that you're talking about, Prokowski. We don't get any other information on this whole project, yet somehow there was a group created, people are meeting, making decisions for the city, and then all of a sudden you want us to do it. I looked up the master plan. None of that property is zoned marina, including the marinas. It's all zoned, single family, industrial and office. So I don't know how that happened, but that whole area isn't even zoned for a marina. But my problem is, is we need to get information way ahead of time. This could have been brought to us, or at least we could have been informed about this a long time ago. And yet, well, it, it is true. When was it brought before the commission?
That's not true. We just talked about.
When was it brought before the commission?
It was just talked about last week.
Where?
Lisa, we've had three meetings. It's been no more than a three-week period of time since this took fruition. And it is coming to you a little bit late just because the April 1 deadline. If you don't feel comfortable about moving forward, then it's one of those crazy deals and you wait till next April 1. So I guess you guys would really have to ask that question.
Well, I just think it's unfair. I understand that you have the deadlines, but I just think it's unfair that, that certain people are being given information and the rest of us aren't giving it anything until the last minute. And, and I don't like making decisions about things without having any information. I mean, I hear that there's this Marine City Marina Coalition. First, the city manager said that the community and economic development board created it. I went back and looked at the minutes. They've never discussed any of this stuff for over a year in any of their minutes. So I'm kind of wondering how all this came about. And I'm concerned about the cost and some of the other issues also because we're going to lose tax base on the property. I know you're going to gain boating, but you know, there's a lot of issues that go on with this, but it should have been brought before us a lot sooner. Even if it was in the planning stage, it should have been brought to us so that we at least had more heads up. You know what I'm saying?
That's why we're talking about it now. It was last week.
But you're, you're doing it at such a late notice. This could have been talked about a long time ago. Is what I'm saying.
Alls we're asking for, because there's going to be plenty of time now to gather more information and make everyone knowledgeable about this, alls we're asking for is a simple approval to go ahead with the agreement. And like Brian and Jeff and Dave have said, there are many, many outs. There are many avenues that we can just say, you know what, this isn't for us. But we at least need to because of time is of the essence. I did not create that April 1 deadline. That is through Six Rivers. So there are times when our, our commission is going to have to put a little trust in some other people that make decisions and say, I trust what you're doing. Try, right? Let's at least try.
Well, I understand that. But I'm, all I'm saying is it's not fair to the rest of the board when it's brought at the last minute and we don't get the information. And everybody expects us to just approve stuff based on somebody else's decision without even seeing a map. I mean, it's just common courtesy to the rest of the board to let the rest of the board in on the project instead of us having to hear about it outside. And then, then you want us to vote on it, you know? And I understand the deadline.
Right. But I'm just saying though, that all this information will come to you. I mean, it, you know, we'll, we'll get it out to you as quickly as we can. This just came up very quickly. And alls we're asking for is an approval of the agreement so that we can start moving forward and get all this information together on a timely basis by April 1. Or we're going to lose another year.
Yes, I understand that. But it's obvious that you had the information. So you could have provided us with a lot more before tonight. That's what I'm getting at. And this isn't the only project. You know, I'm, I'm just, you know, this isn't the only project that's gone this way. It's just sad that the commission isn't, isn't involved in it sooner, or at least given some heads up long time ago. Because it's like I said, it's obvious. If you've been having meetings for weeks and months and whatever on this project.
It hasn't been months.
Well, according to the city manager, it's been going on for some time. So, you know, and I've heard there's, and weekly meetings.
Last week was the first meeting where there was a decent turnout and, and nothing was decided. It was just literally an information gathering meeting, which was one week ago. And then now.
I'm, I'm going by what you said on your show, that you said they've been having weekly meetings for some time.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, you bring it up on the show and then we don't get the information tonight and you want to vote. You see what I'm saying? I understand the project. I'm just saying it's very inconsiderate to the rest of the board.
Okay. Well, we'll make sure that you get all the information as required.
If I could just interject briefly to set a few minds at ease and make a few clarification points. So this Marina Coalition had been meeting, at least I was able to attend a meeting at the time as a member of the planning commission and guy in the community who really thinks that we should have a marina downtown. I was invited to one of those meetings by Laura Scatia. And it was just that discussion, information sharing. The last meeting, from my understanding, and all subsequent meetings I've been unable to make as they've been held during the day when I'm working, last meeting is the first one that this came to fruition and was discussed. So at least from the standpoint of this particular decision and where we might be able to go with the marina, that's all that I'm aware of. And I'm only getting this by virtue of kind of meeting minute emails, which are very brief and not very information laden. Two, the property downtown, it, along the river rather, it's zoned WM. I was looking at purchasing a piece of property in that area. And that was actually a concern in terms of that there was a house on the property and would it be able to be a house if, you know, say, for example, the house was razed and you wanted to build another house there. Anyway, so all the data that I've seen actually zones it as WM. So again, I think there's a little misunderstanding here. I don't think that this was an intentional, you know, ignoring of the, of the commission. But again, it's, it's a project that has been liked by the community. It's just that this opportunity only presented itself within the last week or so. So it's a bit of a surprise to everybody. That's all I'd like to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing. If you look at our current master plan, Brian, the, the property that we're talking about, it is, it's zoned three different things all the way through there. The first part is single family. The building is zoned industrial. And then the marinas are zoned office mix. And that's in our current, or business commercial, one or the other. It's hard to tell from the red. But that's in the current master plan we're reviewing today.
Okay. I don't know if that's the latest official zone map. But yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Good catch for master plan corrections.
Does anybody else have any questions while we have Jeff Bohm and Dave here from their meeting?
Hey, this is Jake. Just curious, if this gets approved here, what's the next step?
Brian?
Well, we would start working immediately on the grant application. Again, it's due April 1. So we've got to get cracking at it really fast. So that's what we would do and start working with your staff a little bit to kind of get some of the information we need and, and start working on it right now. So that would be the first step. And then the, the next step after that, as soon as the application is, you know, in readable format, which would be very soon, you would have a public hearing and probably in early to mid-March, which is one of the steps and to the trust fund application process. And then also you need to approve a resolution of support. And that can be done at the same meeting. You can have the public hearing and the resolution of support at the same meeting. If that happens in March, you know, at the second or the last meeting in March, that would be fine. And then we could get that application in by the April 1 deadline. Those are the next immediate steps.
Will all the information be available at the time that we have the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. The information about the grant application itself and the property and such, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure because at this point, we don't have it.
Oh, yeah. No, all of that would have to, that's definitely part of the application map, you know, exactly. That would, very well defined, right? When it is in that application stage. So you'll see all of that.
Right. Just to clarify too, that none of us have it because we're just in the approval stages of the agreement. Anyone else have any questions? Jeff, do you have anything else you want to add?
I just want to know if, about the property, when will we know that?
When we get the, hopefully tomorrow, probably the beginning of next week. Jeff, do you have anything else you want to add to this if you're still there?
No, I know it just kind of came to fruition, you know, relatively quick. I mean, Dave and I went to an initial meeting down there. I had been talking with Chuck Donaldson from the ME DC and what really sparked us. And some of you guys are probably familiar with Chuck. He really felt the marina piece for Marine City was a very strong piece. He would really go to the state and help with some of the funding. And then that was kind of then it brought the next step that we had a phone call with Six Rivers the following. So it was just original meeting with some of the, I guess, the owners or I'm not sure if they had been meeting. It was first meeting that I was at. Second meeting was Chuck Donaldson on a phone call, just to, like I said, reaffirm their support. Third meeting, I said, hey, let me get Chris Punch on the phone. We've used him for acquisitions. And so it can you, you know, it came quick. I'm not going to deny that. But it was, I think also felt that waiting again till April 1 of next year was, you know, a while. But in, in, I respect, you know, Commissioner Hendrick's stuff, you, you will see more of this information. This is, like I said, the first step of a lot of steps to put these things together.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ross. Thanks, Cheryl. I'd just like one thing to be added to the meeting minutes. In the initial, in initially seeing this email come through that this would be added or was going to be proposed to be added to the meeting, my initial question was whether or not we ourselves could, in the spirit of fiscal conservancy or conservatism, apply for the grant ourselves, avoiding some of this cost. But what's clear to me now, and this is what I'd like in the minutes, is that it's certainly beyond, I think, our capabilities, especially to act as someone providing the acquisition for this, that it's outside the purview of what we'd be able to do individually in applying for this grant. So that's all.
Yeah, correct. Correct. We do have some good grant writers with us, but this is beyond our scope.
We just got one approved. Exactly.
Yep.
Commissioner Ross, this is Jeff Bohm again. We have tremendous amount of capacity at the county to write grants. And we actually have used Six Rivers for our last three or four acquisitions. It's not just the grant writing. It's knowing all the cast of characters and all the players at the other state agencies. We're not just talking DNR, talking the waterways commissions. We're talking, we're going to surround the wagons and, you know, shake every bush and do that. So they do bring that level of expertise.
Yep. I think that's an important thing to add to the minutes so people know the rationale and reason why this money is being spent. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to approve the agreement with Six Rivers Land Conservancy, Conservancy for the amount of $3,000 total, but $1,500 for April, due April 1. And then the other 1,500 for December 1 to be our grant writer for a possible land acquisition along the Bell River for a marina.
So moved. Commissioner Kreidler.
Commissioner Ross, second.
We have a motion. We have a approval on the second. So roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I'd like it noted that I'm not against this project, but without proper information, I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, County Commissioner Bohm and Van and Bosch for attending our meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, thank you. Take care, guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye. Moving on, public comments. Anyone is wishing, is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. All right. Moving on to meeting approval. I need, need a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of February 4, 2021.
Is Jake so moved?
Second, Paulson.
Anybody have any discussion or comments, changes? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda. We have item A, departmental activity report, B, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, C, Friends of City Hall, D, a business license for Hook 1, Date and Tackle, and E, the business license for Two Rivers Winery.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through E.
This is Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to financial business, I need a motion to approve expenditures including payroll for $303,000, $303,725.27.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion. We approve expenditures including payroll for $303,000, $725.27.
Jake, support?
We have a motion and support. Anybody have any questions? And roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Motion carries.
And we have preliminary financial statements. And I need a motion to receive and file.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements.
Commissioner Ross, support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to unfinished business, we have a contract for two 600. And moving on to unfinished business, we have a contract for Two Salky South Parker. Elaine?
The contract that you have before you, the subcommittee met with Salky at the site and we went thoroughly through the plans and everything that was over there at the office. We selected some of the alternates that were in the plan. And Salky put together this updated information in the contract. The base price is 329,977.68. This is up from the original 325 of his bid that was approved. So we're looking for approval for this. And then one other thing that I would recommend is approving a contingency so that the subcommittee, if there are things that come up during construction, we can have a little bit of leverage to be able to work on some of the issues that will potentially arise when we get into demolition and availability of some of the products.
Yeah, I think that, do you think that we should, we need to set an amount for that contingency? Like, you know, $10,000? If something comes up, then the subcommittee can, you know, make decisions quickly because there are going to be change orders and we don't want to wait for, you know, full city commission meetings because then this project is going to drag on a lot longer than it should. Other members of the subcommittee, what do you think?
I agree. Do you think 10,000 is enough?
Well, we could do 15 or 20, I mean.
Well, do enough, because look at the issue that we got into with the siding on the exterior.
True. What do you suggest?
I think 20, let's just do 20 as a contingency. Do you need that in two votes, Elaine, or you're just going to add that?
I think you can just make it part of the approval of the Salky construction contract for the amount of 329,977.68 plus a $20,000 contingency.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve the Salky construction contract for the amount of 329,977.68 plus a $20,000 contingency fund.
Second, Clausen.
I just have a question. Do we have to add a $20,000 contingency fund to be used at the discretion of the subcommittee? Or is that just automatically assumed?
Actually, in the contract, number two, it says any additions and subtractions to the base bid will be upon approval by Salky and Marine City Construction Committee.
Okay, okay, sorry. We have a motion and a second, so I need a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to new business, the Marine City Garden Club. They make a request every year. They're going to be providing the, doing fundraisers and stuff for the hanging baskets and the flower barrels that are all around our beautiful city. And they're just asking us to help with watering all of their beautiful flowers.
I believe Judy Jobin is online.
I am.
Do you have any questions?
Hi Judy, you want to add anything?
No, that's, it covers it pretty well, thank you.
Okay, all right. I didn't know you were there, sorry.
That's quite all right.
Okay, well then I need a motion to approve the request to water the city flowers.
This is Commissioner Callahan, I make a motion for this, that the city continues to water the hanging baskets and the flowers throughout the city.
Jake, support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the police department grant for the portable radar signs. Police Chief Heslip, are you there?
I am, good evening.
Good evening.
So, so for several months, I've had, I've wanted to purchase these portable radar signs as we get several complaints in the department about speeders all daily. And so I was trying to find funding for it. And then in late 2020, I was made aware of a grant through the county prosecutor's office. And I applied and received the $6,500 for the purchase of the radar signs. So I'm looking for approval to go ahead and purchase what I have presented before you tonight.
So I just have a quick question. Attorney Davis, do we need to make a motion to waive competitive bidding since this is a grant?
No.
Okay. So I need, I'm sorry. So I need a motion to approve the purchase of the Marine City Police Department radar sign for the cost of, hang on, I had it right here. Now it slipped out of my fingers. Sorry.
6,500. Not to exceed 6,500 yet. 6,213 is the quoted price on the page.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, sorry. Oh, I got it right here, sorry. $6,213 and I'll just leave it at that. So I need a motion.
So moved, Commissioner Kreidler.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Before I proceed.
Yeah. I got a couple of questions for Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I meant to say that. Sorry, does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Jim, it's Lisa Hendrick. I know, are these similar to the ones St. Clair got?
You know, I'm not familiar with what St. Clair got, but you know, several municipalities have these. You know, you could just attach them to any street sign. They capture traffic data if you need to do a traffic study for whatever reason. You can shut the sign off, you know, to see your speed and then turn the sign on. And it just gives people warnings of how fast they're going. And it helps us with the limited manpower that we have. It helps put, you know, some help in neighborhoods where people are complaining about speeders.
Yeah, so you can move around.
Yes.
And my understanding is the ones they had, you can get a reporting system right out of it?
Yes, correct. It's all Bluetooth enabled and you pay a one-time fee for this and it uploads to the cloud. You can, you know, it's got, everything comes right to an app right on my phone. So I'll be able to download reports if you're concerned about certain areas. We can put these signs up and capture any type of data you want and I'll be able to get you those reports, yes.
Wonderful, you're going to need a lot more than two.
I started with two, you know, and it was one of those things, the first company I went with, it was kind of buy one, get one half off. And it was still more than this. The city manager and I have spoke several times about this. This was a company that offered kind of the best bang for its buck with, you know, the one-time, you know, cloud storage and I'm getting two of them. So I would like more than two, but for now I'm happy with two.
I know, everybody in town is going to be fighting over where you put them.
Oh, I know. I'm already waiting for those phone calls.
All right, thanks, that's it.
Anybody else, anyone else? Yes, it's always nice to get another set of eyes and ears on the community. I need a motion to approve.
We have the motion, we need a roll call.
That's right, we're doing roll call vote. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler, before we proceed, I wanted to check with you. Did you want the motion to read that you wanted to prove them at the purchase price of 6,213? Or not to exceed 6,500?
Not to exceed 6,500, since that's the grant.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ross, did you agree with that?
I concur with that, yes.
Okay.
That gives the department any wiggle room if they need to. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to, thank you. Moving on to C, the police department, the Clemis Agreement for the IT services. Jim, you want to talk about this?
Yes, I can. So in the five or so years I have been the chief, I don't believe we've ever signed this contract. But what this entails is just Clemis to run IT services for our modems and our patrol car, our in-car computers and anything related to Clemis. That's all this contract is for.
And Clemis, Clemis is information sharing amongst municipalities, correct?
Yeah, what Clemis is, it's our report management system. And it reports, you know, all of our information that we input. Other agencies that are part of Clemis have the, also have the ability to gather that information.
Jim, it's Lisa Hendrick. Is the cost of this normally included in the whole Clemis system or is this separate?
This is, this is kind of, it's, that's a difficult question to answer. It's, it's part of the whole Clemis agreement. All this is, is just allowing Clemis to work on our computers and modems if, if there's issues.
Okay, it's just because I didn't see any cost figures in here, so that's why I figured it was part of the other issue.
Thank you. Yeah, it's part of the other issues.
Folks, you only want Clemis working on this. There's a lot of security issues with having anybody else work on these issues.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agreement with Oakland County and the Clemis system for IT services. Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Brian Ross, support.
And we have a motion and approval. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And moving, you're welcome, thank you. Moving on to the infrastructure subcommittee recommendation, Elaine?
I put together a memo that is the summary of the recommendation from the infrastructure subcommittee. The project that they put together is the recommendation is to do South Main Street from Union to Marine Street and Union Street from Market to South Williams. That's replacing the water line and it includes paving two sections and replacing the curbs as necessary. There's actually going to be a couple hydrants that are also a part of this project. We do have some cost estimates and a map of the project from project control engineering. If we agree to move forward with this recommendation, the next step would be to get a contract from our engineer for the engineer drawing.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I need a motion to approve the project recommendations for the infrastructure subcommittee. And, hang on, do I got to say the amount?
No.
The total amount?
Nope. It's just a, it's just a motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Okay. What she said.
This is Jake, so moved.
Support, Joe Clausen.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to resolution number 003-2021, property exemption. Elaine, you want to talk about this real quick?
Yep, yep. This is something that we are required to do on an annual basis through the assessor. The county has prepared this for us. This is in line with the state law for the poverty or hardship exemption policy and guidelines. This is something typically for the March Board of Review, we try and get this ready in time for that. And it is something that people can apply for throughout the course of the year. Just looking for an approval of the resolution so that they can move forward with this.
Any questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve this resolution, 003-2021, property exemption.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 003-2021.
Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Motion carries.
Okay, we don't have any items removed from the agenda. Moving on to city manager's report.
I have done a couple webinars since my last notice. EDA, the Economic Growth Meeting and COVID-19 Vaccine Meeting. I attended the Marine City Area Fire Authority meeting last night. I have been working on the redevelopment-ready community project and I had a phone conference with them regarding the new changes that they have to the program. They have split it into a two-pronged effort, so you can either go the essentials route or the certified route. Obviously, the certified route is a little bit more in-depth. So we're going to be moving forward with the essentials route. We're about 41% complete with that. So I will be continuing to work on getting us through the certification process for that. I have updated the data table in the master plan that we talked about at one of our last meetings. And then the owners of the GEC building have worked on their brownfield plan that was previously before city commission. They have some amendments to it and they would like to invite city commissioners to do a building walkthrough, looking at dates either Wednesday, March 3rd or Thursday, March 4th at 4:00. I can just send an email out and see what date works better for everyone unless we just want to try and firm that date up right now.
Well, March 4th is our next city commission meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I prefer to do it the day before. March 3rd, 4:00 PM, Wednesday. It's good for me, this is Hendrick.
Yeah, it works for me. Callahan.
Works for Kreidler.
Okay.
Jacob and Brian, or Commissioner? Jacob and Bryant, or Commissioner.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm just floundering with my calendar to make sure I've, I've got time that day, so that'd be Wednesday, the 3rd, yeah, should be okay.
I'll try to make it, but there's no guarantees at this point, but don't let me hold you up.
All right, it sounds like we've got Wednesday, the 3rd at four o'clock, so I'll let the parties know that that's the date that we'll shoot towards then. Also, just wanted to put a word out that if you do have any water damage from the flooding and backup that we had from the ice dam, to go to bereadysacclarecounty.org. There is a link there to report any damage that you might have. The county is working on putting all of that information together to potentially apply for any type of funding for the emergency. That's it?
Okay. Commissioner Privilege, we'll start in alphabetical order. Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Oh, I got lots of stuff. Alrighty, I want to thank the DPW for the great job and plowing for the latest little snowstorm that we had. They really did a good job getting that mess cleaned up. And we had a Marine City Area Fire Authority Meeting, finally, it's been a long time. We have four new members, two from Chinatown, two from East China. The board last night approved installing a camera system, so we're gonna work the details out on that. We're also looking to hire our fire chief probably full-time due to the fact that we're struggling to keep good firefighters and people just don't want to apply anymore. So it's becoming a safety issue, we also have somebody that, that's there during the day, they do a duty shift. So this is just in addition to that, to try to keep more people on there so that we have somebody that can respond during the day. So we're working on that and I've sent that contract to our attorney, so hopefully he'll be looking at that. We set the budget for the Fire Authority for March 6th. We have a member from each community sits on that board, committee, and then they will work out the entire budget and then we'll hurry up and get that to the city. We've had issues with the pagers that the county had gotten a grant for and got for us. Luckily, Marine City was the squeaky wheel and we're trying to get an antenna system. They do have one eventually for us. Anybody else that needs one's gonna have to pay for it, but because we did the most, we were the most vocal, we were able to get one, but it's gonna take a little bit more time to get it in there. We also had the audit for the Fire Department, we had a clean audit and I want to thank Jen Vandembosh because she does our books for us over there and she really does a great job working with Curtis McBride. I want to also say too, we need new volunteers, so if people are out there, men, women, anybody, we need people to step up and it's a great job. It's very rewarding for working with the people down there, so we're still looking for a lot of candidates. They did receive a grant for a pump for the boat. They have two other grants pending, one for radios and another one for some turnout gear. And we recently replaced the front bay doors and we're gonna do the rear doors in the next budget because they're gonna increase the prices almost double, so we're gonna get in a bid now before they increase all the prices. So the Fire Department, I give those guys a lot of credit, they really work hard to watch the budget and save pennies. So that's all I got.
Uh, Commissioner Callahan.
Well, yeah, I just wanna, I want to take a second here just to thank the DPW for the great job that they did with that snow. That snow came in really fast and there was a lot of it and to sit there and they, they handled it. And I have to say, I've been in a couple other cities around here over the past few days and their streets aren't as clear as ours, so thanks to them. And I also want to congratulate the Marine City Area, the Marine City Area Chamber of Commerce and our volunteers who helped pull off that, our Fire and Ice Festival here on February 6th. It was cold, but we had a great turnout, I mean, that, that skating rink was full almost the whole day. And, you know, we had the fire pits going and there were just people there, just having a good time and people talked about it. So, it was just, you know, I think we've got a couple of events that we're gonna continue to do in the winter and, you know, just bring people into town in the winter, so it's a good thing. So that's it, good.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yeah, I also want to thank everybody that went to the Fire and Ice Festival, that was, that was nice to see. And that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Uh, also want to thank the DPW for getting the streets cleared, that was a pretty immense task and they did a great job. And second, I'm just, even though it's in its infancy and we know very little about it, I'm just excited that there's a prospect of having a marina downtown, so hopefully that will do good things for the city. That's all.
Agreed. Agreed. And now the City Commission is going to enter into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure. I'm sorry?
I should pardon me, Joe Claussen.
Did I miss you?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry, and I went alphabetically too. Commissioner Claussen.
I'm also wanting to ask the city manager about something we usually ask her at the end if anybody else has to say anything. But, one thing is, I'm the liaison for the Planning Commission. And I'm just wondering how we got missed with this committee for the boat dockage or the thing we talked about, the grant. How did, how do we, how do we figure who was gonna represent the Planning Commission?
Commissioner Moran was at the same meeting that I attended.
That's correct.
I got no notice and I'm the liaison from the commission. That's, oh, that's what I'm saying. Is, is somebody else?
Yeah, I, I don't know who was really even in, in charge of this group and who's kind of spearheaded it. As I said, I, I think it kind of got its origins many times that we were talking about projects we'd like to see at, you know, Community Economic Development Board. And then, I, I don't really know who started the Marine City Marina Coalition, whatever it was.
Laura Scotta was heading it, yeah.
Yeah, folks, this is Joe Moran, if I could clarify this. The Marine City Marina Coalition is a combined effort of the Community and Economic Development Board and the Chamber of Commerce. This has not been a secret, we've been working on this for some time. We've had representation from the Planning Commission, from the City Commission, from the City Chamber and from the Community and Economic Development Board. So there's, there's nothing hidden or, or underhanded about what's going on here. We have not had any need to bring any information to the, the City Commission because we have had no movement up until the last week or so. And that event transpired in such a way that we had to act quickly, which we have done and I appreciate the board approving us moving forward with that. But there, there has been representation from all of the, well, not all, but the, the City Commission, the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Board at these meetings, so you're all up to date with where we are at this point, thank you.
Joe, the City Commission never appointed anybody as far as I know.
Well, Brian Ross has been there. Has been there, so.
But it's gotta go through the commission to a point, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, Lisa, Lisa, this, this is not a formal board that has brought this to City Commission.
But your, your email to us said it was created by the, the CEO, the Community Economic Development Board, obviously not.
It's got its origins in the Community Economic Development Board.
That's what I'm getting at, nobody seems to get, you can't get a straight answer on how any of this started and, and, you know, it was just common courtesy, that's all I was asking.
Lisa, no one is, is trying to keep you out of anything. This was a, a, a subcommittee, a, a working group formed originally on the Community and Education Development Board, Community and Economic Development Board to pursue issues on the Marine City waterfront. Same group was the one that put together the, the planning for the, for the kayak launch. This has been a work in progress and, and it's a subcommittee. There has been no, no need for any formal reporting as such, other than to the, to the board that formed us.
Yes, that, that's, that's fine, Joe, but the board that formed it, I looked into a year of your minutes and there's nothing in there regarding a marina.
I, well, Lisa, that's because the board has not met due to holidays and the, and the COVID situation since we started talking about the marina. So, you know, it's, again, there's nothing hidden going on here. That's just the way it's, it's broken in terms of the, the timing.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and we're gonna move on. The City Commission will now enter into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. MCL 15-268, there may, may or may not be any action taken upon returning to open session. I need a motion to enter into closed session.
Joe Claussen, make a motion, enter into closed session.
Brian Ross, support.
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, at this point, I am going to put everyone that is not City Commissioners or for City Commission business into the waiting room. It's not already gone, it looks like, looks like everybody just left.
Goodbye. Goodbye. Are we ready? Yes, we're ready? Okay, so we're back in open session?
Yep.
I need a motion to adopt and follow the legal strategies as discussed in closed session.
Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Support, Joe Claussen.
A motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Brian Ross, support.
And we have a motion and support, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Good night, everyone, motion carries.